Welcome to the July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular city council meeting. Tonight, we have Pastor Ray giving the invocation. Welcome.
Good to be here. Would you all bow your hearts? Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts for the opportunity to serve the people of Muscatine. We thank you for this city, its rich history, its vibrant community, and the promise of its future. We ask for your guidance over this meeting. Bless our mayor, each council member, and all the city officials here with wisdom, clarity, and a spirit of cooperation. Help them to lead with integrity, humility, and a genuine desire to serve the common good. Lord, may the decisions made tonight be rooted in justice, compassion, and stewardship. Give us eyes to see the needs of all the people in our community, from every neighborhood, background, and walk of life. We ask for your protection over Muscatine, its families, workers, schools, and its future. May we also seek to build a city that reflects your values of peace, fairness, and unity. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Cindy, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Lampe.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Conner.
Present.
Seven presents zero absentee.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first one is five A's, Police Officers Life Saving Award presentations for Officer Sam Wheeler and Officer Darren Ritchie. And I'll have both of you come to the podium, please. On May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, Officer Samantha Wheeler and Officer Darren Ritchie responded to a medical emergency regarding a female who was unconscious and not breathing. Upon arrival, the officers assessed the victim, determined she had no pulse, and began CPR. Working as a team, Officer Wheeler performed CPR while Officer Ritchie began preparing and applying the AED. The AED delivered a shock and advised to continue CPR. Officer Wheeler and Officer Ritchie continued their life-saving efforts until relieved by members of the Muscatine Fire Department. Shortly thereafter, the victim regained a pulse and transported for additional medical care. It has been determined that the quick action and teamwork of both officers were instrumental in saving the victim's life. And with that, we present you with two life-saving awards. And then, just a little, just a little.
Yeah, well done, well done. Yeah, well done, good job, well done.
Well done. Well done, Darren. Thank you.
Nice job. Nice job.
You write your best, but you.
All right, here we go. Count three. One, two, three. Do you have more? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
And we have another life-saving award tonight. Matt Jackson, I'll have you come on up. How are you doing?
We'll find out.
All right. On May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, Cedar County Detective Matt Jackson and Officer Adam Bell were engaged in a vehicle pursuit of two suspected narcotic dealers. The pursuit ended when suspect's vehicle left the roadway. Adam, why don't you come up here too, please? The pursuit ended when the suspect's vehicle left the roadway, causing the two suspects to bail out and run on foot. Officer Adam Bell began giving foot chase when the two suspects produced weapons and began firing in the direction of Officer Bell. Detective Matt Jackson immediately returned fire, striking both suspects. Both suspects fell to the ground and immediately surrendered. It, it is Detective Jackson's quick reaction and ability to engage with accurate gunfire that is credited for saving Officer Bell's life. And with that being said, this, this is for you. We have a life-saving word right here, and then just an extra token of appreciation. And we appreciate everything that you have done to keep Officer Bell safe. So, thank you so much.
All right, I'm gonna try to hold this together here. First, I'd like to, I'd like to first say, you should all be very proud of the culture that exists within the Muscatine Police Department. I believe it's a byproduct of the fact that leadership cares about their people. I'd like to recognize Chief Tony Keys, Captain Jeff Yurak, as well as my Sheriff Warren Weddington, and Chief Deputy Kevin Kanaki. They have all played critical parts in getting me through this chapter of my career. And they're all authentic with the way that they care about their people. There's places where leadership is so wrapped up in themselves to care for their personnel as people. There are places, oh, sorry. From the moment after the incident, Tony and Jeff treated me as one of their people. I'm so appreciative and forever indebted for the care that has been extended to me and my family by those men. I'm incredibly humbled and honored by this, and so blessed to share this moment with my family, as well as colleagues and friends. There's a lot of people here that I've worked with, and I learned so much from all of you, and I share this with you. You guys got me ready for this. Coming from a law enforcement family, for me, it makes this even more special. I need to thank my family for their love and support, particularly my wife Jenny, who was essentially my caregiver in the days and weeks that followed the incident. Although I didn't suffer a physical injury, the intensity of this incident and what could have resulted certainly caused significant, significant emotional trauma, as you can kind of see. Working Drug Task Force was the best professional assignment I could ever ask and hope for. I loved it, and I worked with great people who were self-motivated and always willing to help me when I needed it. And I did my best to help them when they needed it. There were a lot of late nights, missed dinners, missed bedtimes, and although my family didn't always like it, they always supported me. I'll finish with recognizing Officer Adam Bell. There's a lot to like about Adam. He's a fellow Cardinals fan, which is awesome, but he's just a good human. And I really enjoy his company. A bond was created from the events on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Adam and I shared a trauma that caused personal, as well as professional, challenges for both of us. We've learned a lot from this experience, and we've leaned on each other to get through this, and we are getting through this. Adam is quick to say that I saved his life. I maintain, if it weren't for his actions, I don't know that I'm here. And I am certain the chance of collateral damage would have increased dramatically. Adam, thank you for all the kindness you've shown me throughout all of this. Love you, man.
Thank you for your service.
No, it's gonna be good to go. Thank you.
Yeah, we're just, we're just waiting for the chambers to clear, so. All right, next item is a proclamation for International Lifeguard and Pool Safety Appreciation Day. Whereas the aquatic centers and pools across the country provide safe places and communities for youth and adults to engage in aquatic activities, and whereas the Muscatine Aquatic Center in its current serves over thirty thousand patrons from the local community and beyond, and whereas this year, two thousand and twenty-five, represents the twentieth summer of the current Muscatine Aquatic Center serving Muscatine and its surrounding communities, and whereas lifeguards, slide attendants, cashiers, and management receive over thirty hours of training each year in aquatic safety, swimming lessons, education, life-saving, and other preparations. And whereas Muscatine Aquatic Center staff serves the public, rain or shine, early mornings and late evenings with amazing public relations skills and smiles on their faces. Now therefore, I, Brad Bark, Mayor of Muscatine, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Friday, July thirty-first, as International Lifeguard and Pool Staff Appreciation Day. In the city of Muscatine, I call upon all citizens to show their appreciation and gratitude to the Muscatine Aquatic Center staff for their dedication to safety and fun in these hot summer months. And tonight, we have McKenna accepting the proclamation. You have a couple things you want to say, too. All right.
And then, if you want to say some words.
Good evening. My name is McKenna Shoemaker, Assistant Manager at the Muscatine Aquatic Center. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about International Lifeguard and Pool Staff Appreciation Day, a day to honor the incredible individuals who keep our summer safe, fun, and unforgettable. Our lifeguards and pool staff are the heartbeat of our facility. Day in and day out, they arrive with dedication, ready to ensure every splash, dive, and laugh is enjoyed safely. Lifeguards, with their sharp eyes and quick reflexes, are always prepared to act in a moment's notice, protecting lives with skill and knowledge. Beyond rescues, they maintain a watchful presence that gives families peace of mind. Our pool staff, from those keeping a close eye on the water slides to those greeting you with a smile at the front desk, work tirelessly to make this place a welcoming amenity for our community. Their job isn't just about blowing whistles or cleaning filters. It's about building trust, fostering joy, and creating memories. Whether it's teaching a child to swim, hosting a fun party in the mornings or evenings, or ensuring our slides and pools are ready for action, their efforts make the Muscatine Aquatic Center a cornerstone for our community. So, to our lifeguards and pool staff, thank you. Thank you for your early mornings, your late nights, and your unwavering commitment. You're not just staff, you're heroes, mentors, and the reason we can dive into summer with confidence. To our patrons and friends in Muscatine and beyond, when you see a Muscatine Aquatic Center staff member, please thank them for their dedication and their work, their commitment to safety and fun. And lastly, to our mayor, city council, and city administrator, thank you for your continued support in our mission to serve this community in encouraging fun and safe aquatic recreation activities for all. Let's give a round of applause to our Muscatine Aquatic Center staff for making our aquatic center a place where safety meets fun.
Great job, McKenna. Thank you. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it. Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda?
Your mayor, I do.
Yes.
I would like to amend the gen- agenda to add an additional bill to the merit construction in the amount of nine hundred and eight thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-three and thirty-one cents.
Is there any other items? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lampe.
And a second by Lampe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with six ayes and one nay. Next item is communications. Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? And next item is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as amended, which includes items ten A through B, items eleven A through D, items twelve A through B, items thirteen A through D, and item fourteen A with bills totaling two million, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-two cents?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Conner.
And a second by Conner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right, next item is a public hearing on proposed development agreement with TNT Hackett Development LLC. Now is the time for the public to comment. Name and address.
Hello, I'm Gina Othmer. I live at nineteen fifteen Green Acres. I brought a petition with me tonight that's been signed by everybody on Green Acres and West Bay, showing their opposition of making Green Acres a through street and connecting Cedar to Folium. There's also some, several members of Green Acres here tonight, and I would like you to wave or stand, just to show that you're in support of not connecting the two streets, so the city council can see it's not just me and the Sears. So, okay. Thank you to councilmembers Lampe, Lewis, Gendrich, Brockert, and Mayor Bark for taking the time to visit with me and some of my neighbors on Green Acres. To see our neighborhood is one thing with your own eyes. When you're just reading about the details and the plans, that's another thing completely. To be on our street and seeing it is helpful. The Muscatine Journal published an article on April fourteenth of this year regarding the planned development between Green Acres and Clarabec. Developer Todd Hackett stated that it's been in development for more than a year and included communication with the city and neighbors in the area. When? What neighbors? I'm a neighbor. I learned of this development from the journal article. This develop- development very much affects me, my family, and all of my neighbors, and there was no communication. Councilmember Jeff Osborne stated in the article that it needs to be a win for everybody. How is this a win for the twenty-two houses on Green Acres? How is this a win for the sixteen houses on West Bay? Green Acres is losing the most. It's an already narrow street that's going to have a significantly increased amount of traffic. Pedestrians will have no safe place to walk because there's no sidewalk. Turning our street into a thoroughfare connecting Cedar to Folium will change our neighborhood dramatically. On Green Acres, we know our neighbors. Crime is almost nonexistent. We watch out for one another. We have a good and desirable neighborhood. It adds to the quality of life throughout the community. Routing hundreds and hundreds of cars on our street every day will effectively destroy this said neighborhood. There's so much being done in the city to improve the quality of life. Everything going on in the riverfront, the city park enhancements, sculptures, the trail system, the new Musco Sports Dome that's getting ready to open, super positive things. However, the quality of life in a community begins with the quality of its neighborhoods. It's a very busy area, and that cannot be changed. There's McKinley, Jefferson, Susan Clark, the high school, Saint Mary's of Matthias, and Guardian Angel Preschool, all within that small area. These schools aren't going anywhere, and they're growing. There's been a lot of talk in the last two meetings about traffic patterns and trying to improve wonky mismatch planning in the past. How does connecting Folium to Cedar improve that? It makes another wonky mismatched problem that you guys are gonna have to deal with. The development is a good thing for Muscatine. It's increasing the tax base. Obviously, that's excellent. Sixteen town homes, ten single-family homes. But I wonder if you give these people a choice of living on a nice, quiet, safe dead end or cul-de-sac or hammerhead or loop lane.
If you'd like someone else to read the rest of it, you can definitely do that.
Yes, please. Who would like to read the rest? My husband? Maybe?
Name and address, and we're gonna give you three minutes.
Jeff Othmer, nineteen fifteen Green Acres. There's been a lot of talk in the last two meetings about traffic patterns and trying to improve upon, oh, you already read that. I don't know where you're at. You say this will alleviate problems for the city regarding trash pickup and snow removal. Your logic is flawed. We are not the last dead-end street in the city. It does not cross that problem off your list. Trash and snow have been successfully dealt with on our street since the mid nineteen sixties, and it very much can continue. The city employees do an excellent job. You don't change the whole trajectory of a neighborhood based off this argument. The development is a good thing for Muscatine, increasing the tax base. Excellent for everyone. Thank you for all your service. It's not an easy job. There's no pleasing everyone. This development, as it stands right now, is flawed. It does not benefit our community at large. And if you were all honest with yourselves, you can see that the purpose of city council is to represent the interests of their constituents and make decisions that benefit the community. How is connecting Cedar Street to Folium via Green How is connecting Cedar Street to Foleum via Green Acres improving life and traffic and normal day-to-day-ness within our community?
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to share? Name and address, three minutes.
Kim Sears, 1914 Green Acres. Thank you again to Mayor Bark and the councilmembers who have taken the time to visit our neighborhood this past month. Some say, even some on this council, have said that it's a futile effort on the part of our neighborhood group, especially when I see the newly carved-out dirt road already butted up against the end of Green Acres, even before the final vote. To say that I am extremely disappointed in the transparency of this project is an understatement. As Gina stated, our Muscatine Journal article on April 14th stated that, quote, "This project was in development for over a year and included communication with the city and the neighbors in the area." This is untrue. No one on Green Acres had ever been contacted by the developer or the city. That's when our neighborhood united to stop the city from making a traffic bottleneck even worse than it is now on Foleum, Cedar, and Hauser. There won't be any way to change what the city is about to make happen. We have been told to let the city council know about any issues when our street becomes a busy throughway from Cedar to Foleum. That ship will have already sailed. We have been told that strategic placement of stop signs and curves will keep traffic at a minimum, but our neighborhood will now be the most direct point between four schools and the already traffic nightmare that exists now. Green Acres is a very narrow street with seven homes of the 22 houses having only a one-car garage, meaning that cars park on both sides of the street, leaving only one lane.
How long? I think I tried to...
Jody, could you mute, please?
Four or five.
Or Kevin, are we gonna mute Jody?
Over an hour. Oh, yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
But three holes. So, I asked them, they agreed for 68. Oh. And then...
Sounds like they're having fun, but...
I think she got it muted.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's muted.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I'll finish. But our neighborhood will now be the most direct point between four schools and an already traffic nightmare in the area. What assurances will we have from the city that they're not going to see the error of their decision and widen our street, make us put in sidewalks, and leaving us with only half of our front yards, that are very small to begin with, as some of you have seen? The city's desire to put in a new addition, which is great for the city, we all agree with that, has come, though, at the expense of the citizens of Green Acres who have lived there for many, many years. Why is that okay? It doesn't feel great to know this about our city. I have also been very disappointed in the refusal of the city council to entertain any other ideas that our group has proposed. It's almost like this had been in the works for over a year, which it turns out is true. If we could have been included a year ago, things might look different for us and for you. This council has been closed-minded on any idea that we have presented. This is the third reading of the vote to open up Green Acres as a two-way through street. There's still a chance for you to change how this is going to impact this area by voting no today. As far as our neighborhood group...
Mrs. Sears, it's time.
Okay.
But do you have anyone else? Mr. Sears, would you like to finish her? And just to reiterate, everyone, this... Not yet, we're gonna wait. You can speak in just a little bit. And just to reiterate, the third and final reading tonight is strictly about zoning, not the plans, just strictly the zoning. But, yes. Name and address, three minutes.
Kirk Sears, 1914 Green Acres. As far as our neighborhood group, we will remain united, and if you vote yes, we will be contacting the city council on a regular basis with every issue we have in the future with the traffic issues. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to speak tonight? Name and address, three minutes.
My name's Daryl Hazelwood. I live at 1918 Green Acres, right on the very end, last house on the left, if you've ever seen that movie. You'd be afraid of it. But I let the contractor know, or one of the guys who's working with the contractor, that the engineer that built the house moved the fence back six foot. So, they came up the caterpillar and just shaved everything off. There's no way I can get back there with the lawn mower, even, I mean, my riding mower won't go back there, and a push mower won't go back there. And so, then they came and they told me that the fence is in the right spot now. It divides, you know, properties, so... But I just wondered if anybody, you know, might wanna check that out? Hackett, or...
We can get an answer back to you.
He told me, he said, "Or you can go hire your own surveyor." And who wants to do that? I guess that's all I've got to say. But, well, notice, about five years ago, the city came up, and they marked curbs, they marked the street with white paint, and they were gonna replace those sections. And once the guy left, never saw him again. Didn't see the city come out and do anything, so... We're just stuck on a street that's kinda cracked and bumpy, and so... But that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to, for the public hearing? Mr. Hackett? Name and address, we'll give you three minutes.
I live at 1923 Wildwood Lane, Muscatine, Iowa. And I just wanna talk for a minute and set some of this clear. I don't know where this one-year deal is coming from, because this thing wasn't even brought to my attention until October of last year. So it hasn't been a year. Second of all, I didn't even enter into an offer until around January. So I have no idea where the one-year's coming from, but it wasn't from me. And I have had two times I have talked to people on Green Acres. Once on a Saturday with Andrew Anderson, and once at the end of the Claraback on a night. That was the only times I've, and I have reached out. And as far as, I mean, as far as the Green Acres through street, I mean, I don't know what to say to that, other than, you know, everybody thinks it would be the best. I know the Green Acres people don't. But, I mean, but that's kinda where everybody feels is the right way to go with it. And as far as the fence issue, Martin Whitaker pinned the fence. The rear part of your fence is on your property, about halfway through it. If you see the stake in your front yard, that's the property pin. That fence is on my property.
Sir, Daryl, we can't talk right now. Thank you. You're fine.
And I don't know what else to say. I had Martin Whitaker, because there was concern about the timber line there and the property owner's line there. They have a GPS system on their dozer, but to sure that the GPS system didn't get off, I had Martin Whitaker go out there and stake all the way down the property lines on both sides, just as a precautionary, that we don't get into the neighbor's property. I mean, we're not trying to make life difficult for anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett. Is there anyone else I'd like to speak for the public hearing? Here or none, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right, now we are to 17A. Third and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Muscatine, Iowa, and 9.25-acre area located behind the southern end of Claraback Lane and the northern end of Green Acres Drive. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on third and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Conard.
We have a motion by councilmember Conard.
Second, Lampy.
Second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with the public regarding zoning? And council? Here or none? Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is B, is a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Hackett Development. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gingerich. Is there any discussion with the public regarding the preliminary plat? Council, any discussion? Here or none? Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is C, is a resolution approving the final plat of Hackett Development First Edition. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Conard.
We have a motion by councilmember Conard, and a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with the public? Any discussion with council? Here or none? Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gingerich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. And the next item is Public Hearing A, is a resolution approving development agreement with TNT Hacket Development Group LLC authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by councilmember Lampy, and a second by councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none? Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is E, is a request to waive third and final reading to approve on second reading an ordinance providing the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.19 of Code of Iowa. Is there a motion to waive the third and final reading and adopt this ordinance on second and final reading and direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis.
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Good evening. Name and address, we'll give you three minutes.
Charles Lawrence, 1808 Briarwood Lane. So I sent my, an email to my first ward councilman that I was appalled when I came down to the city hall and read what was on the agenda. There is a reason why they want three readings. Obviously, tonight, there were people probably come up, come in and talk about the third reading. I do not want you to waive the third reading. We, the people, have a right to hear all three readings. There is no reason, no reason at all, that you should have to waive it. You gentlemen and ladies can do what you want. If you do not waive the third reading, you will hear about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to comment? Counsel?
Yeah, mayor, real quick. Yes, Charles, we did... Charles?
Oops, he left.
The email was received today, just a few hours before council, and it was forwarded to city staff to understand what the process was on this. And so, yes, his email was received and was forwarded as suggested, and we are talking about it, yes. So...
Thank you, councilmember Lampy. Any other comments, counsel? Here or none? Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gingerich?
Aye.
Second and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with six ayes and one nay. Next item is F, is a request to waive third reading and to approve on second and final reading of an ordinance to vacate indeed undeveloped right-of-way between parcel 130345605, parcel 1303456016, and parcel 1303456012 on Robey Avenue to adjoining property owner. Is there a motion to waive the third and final reading and adopt this ordinance on second and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Conard.
We have a motion by councilmember Conard, and a second by councilmember Gingerich. Is there any discussion with public? Any discussion with council? Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gingerich?
Aye.
Second and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is G, is a resolution approving the execution of a deed for the vacated undeveloped Robey Avenue right-of-way to the adjoining property owners. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon, and a second by councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none? Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is H, is a resolution setting a date of meeting in which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Carver Pump Company, including annual appropriation and tax increment payments. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Gingerich.
Second.
And a second by Conard. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none? Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conard?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a resolution authorizing special assessments for unpaid abatement service fees and rental housing fees to private properties. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by councilmember Lewis.
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
Mayor, real quick.
Yes.
Yeah, on this one here, I guess what I'd like to see is, I know that there are, I can't say that, I would like to see some type of a report for, that would generate habitual offenders of this, because obviously, we are spending time and everything else, and more or less, we, as city staff and contractors, are maintaining property out there of individuals that are either unwilling or unable to maintain their property. So if we do have habitual offenders, and that all can be defined what habitual offender is and everything else, but I think we should consider, or would like to see us consider some type of thing that says, if you are a habitual offender, the cost of the additional things that we do, if it's a third time, fourth time, fifth time, whatever it be, that those costs and charges back to those homeowners are increased in a schedule that slowly steps up if you are indeed a habitual offender, because people just leave their property go, and we, as a city, maintain that. And I think we should ask the owners of those properties to pay for that type of service.
Any other questions? Any other questions? So, um, I guess, before we get to the vote, city minister, or I should, council, is there any issue with, uh, talking to the city minister to evaluate, uh, get a list with habitual offenders?
No, I think-
Any objection?
Well, we've talked about the habitual offenders, you know, on other occasions, and it seems to me like I, I have no business speaking for the whole council, but everybody, you know, has been, uh, you know, positive about accepting some kind of policy, uh, that speaks to habitual offenders, if our city staff can come up with something that's workable and so forth. Uh, so, you know, Councilmember Lampy makes a good point. It's, uh, been an ongoing issue, and, uh, it would be good to-
Agreed.
Move forward with some strategy, you know.
Councilmember Brockert?
Yes, there's someone on that list who's been dead for years.
Oh, okay. All right. City administrator?
Got my orders, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Here or none. Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne? And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is J, is a resolution approving contract and bond with Needham Excavating in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for dredge spoils, relocation, trenchless pipe installation project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with public? Counsel, any discussion? Here or none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne? Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gingerich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is K, is a resolution accepting bid and authorizing award of contract for the construction of taxi lane, construction improvements at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy?
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Gingerich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Connerd?
Aye.
Brockert? Brockert? I just wanted to make sure you're awake. Okay, sorry. I apologize. Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Osborne? And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. I apologize, I totally missed you. I know you will. Next item is L, is a request to approve the install stop signs at the intersections of West Second and Lynn Street, West Second and Spruce Street, and West Second and Loca Street, and East Fourth and Fairview Avenue. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Osborne and a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council?
I, I do have a question. I went up West Second yesterday, and popping those stop sign on those three corners would stop progress if you're going up kind of a slippery hill. I can see somebody sliding back down into somebody behind them if they have to stop. But otherwise, you know, if it's a traffic control problem there, then it's something we'll deal with.
Councilmember Gingerich?
I was surprised by this agenda item when it came up. Uh, East Fourth and Fairview is, you know, a block away. I know just about everybody on Fairview, and many, and Holly, and Laurel, and East Fourth, uh, just about everybody would be a stretch, but an awful lot of people, especially on Fairview. Uh, we had a issue three years ago with a three-way stop sign on Laurel. That issue kind of just dropped and went away, uh, after the four lane to three lane got completed. We have a, uh, yield sign on Holly, and no stop sign on East Fourth. And I hear that these stop signs and so forth are being put on because of, uh, traffic numbers and so forth, and, uh, citizen complaints. And I talked with citizens on the corner, right there, East Fourth, right there, been there for twenty-five years. They knew nothing about it. And then we get this report from the traffic committee that we need to be putting these signs in. Now, signs are good. We should have signs in some other places in town that I can think of, too, that are much more dangerous than East Fourth, going on to Fairview, to serve about four or five homes. So I'm surprised at this. I don't, you know, I'm kind of confused as where some of these issues come from, you know, that just pop up. Uh, a stop sign on East Fourth, I don't, you know, what are, what were the traffic numbers that needed to be taken care of? The, the, made this such an urgent situation. How many, what, what did the survey, the traffic survey say, I guess is what I'm asking? Uh, you want to put up a yield sign? Uh, Holly has a yield sign. The residents there on the corner of East Fourth and Fairview, uh, think, geez, stop sign. Uh, you know, I could see maybe a yield sign, but, uh, once again, they were not surveyed, or asked, or, uh, the ones I talked to didn't complain about the corner either. So a yield sign might be a, I, you know, if anything, I would like to make an amendment for East Fourth and Fairview to just go with the yield sign. But this whole process for these four stop signs has been kind of interesting. And, uh, I hope we can be a little more, uh, clear and forthcoming with some of these things. It just seems like, uh, it doesn't seem like it. That is a corner that hardly anybody ever even drives around. So, I don't know, I, I guess more than anything, I need to express my, uh, confusion as where this comes from, and why we need a stop sign there, and we have information about, well, what are the, we assign these stop signs because of numbers and, and, uh, traffic study and, and that type of thing. The neighbors don't know anything about it. So, anyway, that's enough, Mayor. I'm repeating myself.
You're fine.
So.
I'll take, I'll take a stab at it. Uh, so to answer your question on the complaints, complaint-driven pieces for the traffic committee don't necessarily just include the people in the area. They also include your citizens that drive in the community. They include your cops that are in cop cars that have close calls in these same areas, that then report to the chief, or to the lieutenant, or to Director Steinman that, hey, there's an issue, or we've had some near misses in those areas. So, we're just simply requesting that, uh, the best thing to do, uh, through the traffic committee and our engineers to put stop signs at those locations. Uh, if you don't choose to put a stop sign at those locations, we will put yield signs, because we don't need council permission for that. So that's why you see a yield sign at like Holly, and we can do that, and we can enforce those. They're just traffic, uh, control signs. So, we're going for best practice on what we want to do moving forward. And if it's not a stop sign, we're, we understand. We can do a yield sign if that suits them better at Holly, and we can evaluate that as well. So, it's not just complaints in the area, it's also complaints in other people in the community that drive in the area. So that's what the traffic committee reviews. Uh, and I encourage anybody who questions how the traffic committee works to attend the meetings, uh, and kind of see what's discussed. But, uh, as far as the stop sign or yield sign, that's, that's at council's discretion. So if you do not want a stop sign there, we can move to a yield sign. That's not a problem.
Well, I do have a specific request from, you know, a couple of citizens I talked to. Uh, like I say, their reaction to a stop sign was, what? And, uh, we talked, and they thought, well, you know, a yield sign might be okay. But there's no, there's no, uh, suggestion to put a yield sign on Laurel. Two blocks away, same deal. So, I don't know. Uh, I probably will vote. I haven't heard about the other three streets, any comments. I haven't even been over to look at the stop sign situation on the other three streets. But, uh, I, I would certainly, you know, ask the council or the, you know, our law enforcement to, uh, as the citizens requested or asked, you know, a, a yield sign should really be adequate there. It, their response, so, you know.
Can we separate that?
I believe we can.
If we, if we vote on this overall, is that just something that we can-
I think we can make an amendment.
The traffic, okay. A friendly amendment, so we don't have to do multiple votes, just, okay. Sounds good.
So, Mayor, real quick, then, I don't know when you want to do that amendment, but I guess I'd like to, just real quickly, you know, I, obviously, the, none of these stop signs are in my ward, so I don't necessarily know, you know, the situations around them. Mine's more about the process of bringing this type of request forward, 'cause surprises are always tough when it comes from, um, you know, the, uh, the general public, when you get a call as a, as a council member, uh, that says, hey, why are these stop signs going in place? And we don't necessarily know about it. So, mine's more about the process and making sure that we understand that, some of what to, you know, John's, uh, comments and stuff about, you know, can we change and improve on the process? And I think from discussions with everybody, that answer is yes, uh, and stuff, so that we'll get some additional information to answer some of John's questions, uh, and just improve on the processes, things like this come out of the traffic committee. 'Cause I think there's good input, and there's knowledge, and there's professionals that, uh, sit on that traffic committee. Uh, I think it's just, if we can get some additional information as these requests come forward, it would help us answer some of John's questions and my questions as well. Thank you.
So, actually, I think we're supposed to, uh, go to, right to the vote, or the amendment, and then we come back. Is that right? Or? So, uh, councilmember Gingerich?
I'd like to make a motion to amend this item for the proposed stop sign at East Fourth and Fairview to be changed to a yield sign.
So we have a motion, or we have a, an amendment, motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second, Lampy.
Second by Councilmember Lampy. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries, and now we- Now we can come back. Okay, yes, Councilmember Osborne?
I, I, um, I haven't, I don't think these stop signs on Second Street will be received very well. Would be my first read. I'd like to talk to the neighbors some more. I'm not against yield signs. I think those would be better. Um, but I would go, you know, tonight, unless we can amend them all to a yield, or if we can have a little bit more time. And it is my word.
So, city administrator, um, with us just passing this, are we, I mean, even though we just voted for stop signs, can we just have the traffic committee relook it, and, or how?
I don't, they certainly need a traffic committee. I respect what the traffic committee does. I respect that those things can be recommended by officers. I respect all of those things. Um, but I, this, this, everybody on council as well as, I don't, focuses, even know this is coming, and I think we'll get a lot of questions, so I'd like to talk to the neighbors a little more.
All right. Councilmember Connerd?
Driving through Green Acres today, West Bay, also driving through here with the stop signs. I was shocked that there's no stop signs there on Second Street. It's like, you know, you drive there all the time and through that way, and it's like, oh, there's no stop sign there. So I'm shocked that there's not stop signs along Second Street. Uh, you know, I think it's just common to have them on those intersections, along with Third, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh, so.
Councilmember Gordon?
I just want clarification on the Second and Spruce's example. So is Spruce Street coming onto Second already a stop sign?
No. Well, that's the one that's missing.
So we got Second, which does not have stop signs, but the cross streets?
I'm gonna clarify this a little bit, maybe it wasn't clear enough. Uh, the stop signs aren't on Second. The stop signs are on the crossing streets.
Okay.
So it's Spruce that does not have it, and Lynn, so forth going down, that does not have the stop signs. And the reasoning for a stop sign over a yield on those three intersections is based on the MUTCD recommendation for sight distance. Uh, you can't see when you come up to them. So that states that a yield sign is not appropriate for that use case, and it's supposed to be a stop sign when you have reduced vision.
And that, that's perfect, because before, if it was Spruce had a stop sign already, and we're adding a Second, we're making a four-way stop.
No, that, that's not the intent.
Thank you.
All right. Item M. We don't have to go back, because it was a friendly amendment, correct?
You have to vote on it.
You have to vote on, on the amendment.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the regular?
As amended.
As amended. There we go, thank you.
So moved.
Clarify what the amendment is now?
The amendment, the amendment was, uh, the Fourth and Fairway Avenue.
I thought we voted.
We already voted on that, by the way.
Voted to amend the-
Oh, okay, okay.
How you need to vote on it with all the stop signs and the yield sign as amended.
All right.
So you'll have a stop sign at Spruce, you'll have a stop sign at Locust, and Lynn, and then at Fourth and Fairview, you'll have a yield sign.
Okay.
That's what your amendment was.
Is there a motion to approve the install? Sorry, this one is definitely a little bit longer. So send it, would you be able to assist me in this? So a motion to approve stop signs at West Second and Lynn Street, West Second and Spruce Street, West Second and Loca Street, and a yield sign at East Fourth and Fairview Street? Okay, there we go. Is there a motion to approve that as amended?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Gordon. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion request is approved as amended with six ayes and one nay. Thank you. Next item is M, is request to issue change order number three for the new transit Wash Bay facility in the amount of seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert?
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council?
Yeah, Mayor, real quick. So again, I think, you know, this, I think we all agree that the Wash Bay has been a interesting project to work through. So, um, I'd give kudos to, uh, the staff and stuff that have worked through the, uh, Wash Bay issues. It's been a long and tedious and frustrating process for them, I'm sure. Um, I would like to see, if possible, again, this is just me, uh, asking, uh, lower-cost alternatives to this. Are there other alternatives to it? I understand in the packet that we received that there are costing for this, uh, option, but are there other options, and what were those options, and are, can they be, is it a lower cost and, and more efficient use of, uh, taxpayer funds for those other options? That's all I have.
You have comments, Mayor?
Yep.
We're bonding for this concrete that was, uh, overlooked by previous engineering. There's further work on this building that needs to be done, upwards of a hundred thousand dollars. Yes, a hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars for a project that has already cost too much, is past due for being open and ready to go. It's a significant low spot in the concrete that could, I, I, in my opinion, could certainly be taken care of at a much cheaper, uh, option than, the, the, the drainage on the west side of the building is bad, the, there are horizontal outspouts going out that people are gonna drive over with their trucks. Uh, yeah, I don't know, maybe you can tell, it's kind of a frustrating situation for me. But we're bonding for this, and, uh, we should not be doing that. Uh, the, the area is dry now. Uh, is it, how, how often is it wet? How often is there a puddle there? Significant puddle? Absolutely. I've been there and toured and saw a significant low spot and water standing out in front of the Wash Bay. But, uh, my advice, counsel, I'm voting no. Uh, there's much cheaper options. We can drive through a puddle for a couple of years until, until there's money for it, I would think. But, uh, geez, I'm a no vote, for sure. I, I don't, you know, I probably have other notes here if you want to indulge me, but I think I've made my point, anyway.
Any other questions, counsel? Councilmember Gordon?
I'm sort of in the middle with John. I, I, I don't mind the bonding issue. I do mean, I do, I'm opposed to the cost, because there was an alternative that was about half the price, and in a year where we've tried to be lean and cut costs down, I think we need to look at the alternatives. Um, so, like I said, the bonding didn't bother me, but, uh, the solution, I think we need to look at, uh, alternatives, 'cause it is, it's not the best project this year. It's, thanks to the vendor and everything, so.
Councilmember Lewis?
Your honor, in lieu of, uh, what I'm hearing, council-
Your honor, in lieu of what I'm hearing council talk about, I would like to amend this and have the engineer and public works go back and actually present us with our other alternatives.
So do you just want to table it or amend it?
Please, table it.
And we don't need a motion to table it?
That is correct.
I didn't hear that, Mayor. I apologize.
There's a, this item's tabled for further evaluation by staff. So we're not voting on it tonight.
Councilwoman Lewis is making a motion to table this issue?
That's correct. So that they can bring back more information, so that, you know, other alternatives.
Sendah, do we need a second with that, too? I was going to say, tonight's been very fun.
Interesting.
All right, very interesting. And I believe we do need a second with table. So we have, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
So move, or second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries a table with five ayes and two nays. So it'll be tabled.
Me and Matt.
Hopefully I did that appropriate, too. All right, next item is N. Is a request to enter into a supplemental agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for maintenance of primary roads in municipalities. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
A second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is O. Is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order of ZWB General Construction, the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for roof replacement at Pearl City Station. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is P. Is request to approve a contract to High Brand Industrial Contractors LTD for the Mississippi Miss Spray Pad Improvement Project in the amount of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Conard.
We have a motion by Councilmember Conard.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council?
Yeah, Mayor, a couple of questions real quick.
Yep.
Rich, any idea on when they would start and when they would complete? Because obviously, that, that miss pad is a, a big attraction. A lot of people love using that. And I get frequent questions about, it's great to see Taylor Park back up and running, so well done with that. And good, I was down there the other day, and there's lots of people on that one. So any idea on when this would start and when it would complete?
Good evening, Mayor, council. The contractor will be notified tonight if you approve it. The notice of proceed will go out at 8:00 a.m. They will begin immediately. They're expecting thirty days if all pieces can come in as planned.
Excellent. So it would, or that would put it open for this season or not?
A little bit.
A little bit?
A little bit.
That would be nice. Okay, well done. Thanks.
That's the plan. The key is, we've got some specialized nozzles that have to be ordered. We believe they'll be coming on time, but they are specialized modified nozzles.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Director Climes? Councilmember Brockert?
Are we sure this thing is going to be tamper-proof?
You're going to have to explain what you're asking here.
That no more incidents occur like the one that has caused its shutdown.
Sure. So with the shutdown cause, it was a state code evaluation. There was a professional engineer hired to give an assessment of it. There was a state construction permit issued after ten months in review. So it meets every state code. It meets engineering standards. I think that's as safe as we can make it. I think that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Rich.
All in favor? Councilmember Osborne, do you have a question?
For funding for this project, there's a budget in line on it.
He's walking back up.
The funding for the project was set at one hundred and twenty-five thousand, and I believe it was bonded. Bonded for, and it did commit at eighty-five thousand, so there is enough room margin there if we do find an additional thing. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Osborne? Thank you.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is Q. Is request to authorize the municipal twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six musketeen city deer hunt. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis?
Second.
I knew it was coming. And a second by Councilmember Gingerich. Is there any discussion with council?
All I can say is this is overdue. I had probably about five in my front yard across from Foleum Street. And if I could have shot them, I would have had deer meat for probably a couple of years. So they're in the middle of town, so I think the more we can get out of town or reduce the, the packs, it'll be good.
Well, kind of a follow-up comment to that. You know, our city deer hunters are, I think, in my, a respectful group. And, you know, citizens that are reluctant maybe to let that activity go on, I think they should give it a try and, and, you know, see if everything works out okay. And I do have a question for Mr. Climes. I'm interested in how many people attempt, how many people have been declined because they were not proficient enough?
Zero.
Yeah.
Zero last year. Everybody passed the two out of three target shots of, I think it's twenty.
So everybody, I, you know, I'm not hearing very well tonight, but anyway, although I'm hearing effectively, okay? How many people did not qualify that attempted to qualify for the city deer hunt?
Everybody who attempted did qualify this last year.
And I like to keep track of that, because, you know, as I often, I've found throughout the years, visiting with hunters and so forth, and participating myself, you know, I could go up to the target and shoot one arrow in right on top of the other one, one after another. But when I get out in a hunting situation, as many, many hunters do, you know, they make a little mistake, you know, they maybe attempt a shot through, you know, a little too much brush or whatever. So that, that proficiency test isn't an absolute accuracy of what kind of an ethical bow hunter you're going to be letting on to your land in any, you know, other than just the proficiency of that three out of five arrows at, at the five-inch bullseye. Now, it doesn't need to change, because everybody's qualifying, and that's great. But, you know, just kind of keep that in mind. I think we should, council, that the idea is to get people to qualify and to get them out in a spot where they can enjoy the hunt and do the, the city a, I think, a, a good service. So, thank you. It's, it's a well-run hunt, council. Very well done, so.
And if anybody is interested in the hunt this year, they can give me a call. They can stop into the office. There is a mandatory meeting to come to. We usually get forty-five, fifty people showing up at it. It's really quite, as I think Councilmember Gingerich will admit, a quite an entertaining meeting, where we talk about the deer from last year that were taken and how big the deer were. It is a collective group. While no one, no one failed to test this last year, we also received zero complaints about hunters acting inappropriately. And we did lower, marginally, but we did lower traffic accidents caused by deer this last year. The proficiency test, as Councilmember Gingerich mentioned, is set by the DNR. They set the standard for what the test should be. Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Last item is R. Is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Martin and Whittaker Surveyors and Engineers, Inc. in the amount of thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for additional land surveying services on the West Hill Sewer Separation Six E project. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Councilmember Gingerich, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
I would just like to ask city staff to, and maybe I can get an answer now. I'd, I'd like to know what metrics we are going to use to measure whether or not our trap, neuter, and release program is reducing the number of wild feral nuisance cats in the city. So at whatever point that information can be getting, I can receive that. Why, that'd be great, but it doesn't have to be now.
I don't have a plan in place as far as measuring it. We're going to see what happens in a year. It is just a tool to try to eliminate the feral cat population. It's another tool. So I don't know if I can get you that. I think you probably know that that would be a hard number to obtain, and so I'll let you know how many cats get trapped this year and get TNR'd. And then maybe the next year, let you know how many cats get trapped and TNR'd, and then that would give you a basis. But it might take a couple of years to get you that, so it won't be as fast as you probably are expecting it. That's a hard number to get.
So I won't go any further other than one more statement here. We've adopted a program that we don't know how. We're going to measure whether it works or not. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Councilmember Brockert?
Sometimes we take for granted that our law enforcement officers are ready for anything. Nothing bad ever happens here until it does. We forget that these men and women are vulnerable, living, breathing, just like the rest of us. The life-saving awards given tonight are a reminder that these are extraordinary people doing work that most of us don't know how to do or would even dream of doing. So my hat is off to our law enforcement folks.
Councilmember Conard?
Nothing to nightmare. Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis?
Just a couple of things, your honor. Just want to give a shout out to Tony, I'm going to call him Tony Tone, because that's how I know him. And they did the lemonade and for the domestic shelter. As you can see, I have my little adopt monster sitting here. Oops, I just fell down. That's all right. What a great event. I think they raised over nine thousand dollars, I think, for the women's shelter. So it was a great event. There was a lot of good food, a lot of good conversations going on. The other thing I want people to be aware of is please remember it's motorcycle season. We've actually lost a couple more this last weekend. I always tell people, I said, make sure as we're riding that we're seeing and, and that they see you, because sometimes people see, we think they see us, and they don't. They see through us. So just be safe out there, and I think that's all, your honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon?
I've got one thing, Mayor. Thank you. I just want to thank the library again for, they're sort of wrapping up the summer reading program. And if you think about it, it's not really a reading program, because they had creative outlets every week for the kids, the youth, the adults and everything. So thanks for thinking outside the box and putting on a great program. And they were having their celebration tonight, I think, in their parking lot as we went by.
Councilmember Osborne?
This Sunday, we've got the pickleball tournament at Tyler Park at nine a.m., Ivy Car Show Saturday at eleven a.m. We've got the farmer's market, seven thirty a.m., eleven thirty a.m. And I'd like to give a shout out to Almost Friday Fest happening next week, a week from tonight.
Councilmember Lampy?
Yeah, just real quickly, I want to echo Councilmember Brockert's statement about our law enforcement and public service people. They do a job that a lot of us, you know, again, you know, don't think about. We just say that, hey, everything's great and everything's fine, but behind the scenes, there are some amazing people doing some amazing things that we should all be very appreciative of, that they keep our, our city safe and our citizens safe. And again, shout out to, you know, Mr. Keys and all the work that he does and everything else. So thank you very much for your help in keeping our citizens safe, so. That's all I got.
Sendah? Chief Keys?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
City administrator?
I just have a couple of things. I want to thank all our departments that stepped up in the Public Works Department as they deal with a couple of losses internally of some family members. So our heart goes out to those folks, and just wanted to know we're thinking about them.
Perfect. All right, and I just have an item regarding an event that's coming up. So August 2nd, there's two big events happening. We have the Twisted Catfish Tournament, Jack and Jill. So this would be, could be spouse, husband, wife going to be a team. Councilmember Gingerich, I think, you know, maybe you could be out there fishing.
I'd be glad to partner up with you, Mayor. I'm not baiting your hook for you, though.
I don't think I would ever pick on him again. So anyways, and then also on that day, we have our first musketeen triathlon. It's a sprint triathlon powered by Squencher. And it starts at five a.m. That's when Deep Lakes Park opens. And you're going to have, I think, right now, we're over a hundred and fifty participants already. From, and there's ten, I think, I want to say that there's ten different pros that are coming to this, which is abnormal for the first triathlon. So I was going to say, Adam Ray's back, and Katie Hammond and team are doing a great job with that. Eight o'clock, the race begins. The first item is a swim. It's seven hundred and fifty meters across Deep Lakes. And then it's bike for twelve point four miles. And then there's a sprint, or not a sprint, but a, a run for five K. And then during that time, there are a few want to come down there, where there's going to be a musketeen market, food and other vendors. There's going to be a lot of family fun events. So if you have little kiddos, bring them down. There's going to be some finding treasure in some of the sand. Kids' own component of it as well. There's going to be a lot of parking, so general spectator, you know, spectators, definitely invited to come. And then afterwards, after that's all said and done, everybody's sore, we're going to have an after-party, and it's put on by the chamber ambassadors. So we're very thankful for that fun group. And it starts at four and will end at ten o'clock at night, so pretty excited about that. Free admission to the public. And Councilmember Gingerich, I thank you for reminding us to bring this up, so appreciate that.
Well, they really have a lot of good activities planned that day for the kids.
You bet.
Entertainment and so forth. I know my wife just happened to be in charge of the entertainment committee, you know, for the kids. And our house is stacked up with all these prizes, you know, and people are putting a lot of work into it.
Yeah, Julie's been doing a fantastic job with that as well. Absolutely. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.